The Thursday, February fifteenth, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Roll call. Chairman Clarko. Vice Chair Papa Holzer.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Janet Balsamo.
Here.
Carolyn Kean Delora.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
Here.
Marcy Nafrio. Please please stand to salute the flag.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take this opportunity to observe a moment of silence for the victims, families, and community members involved in the tragic school shooting at Marjory Douglas Stonehouse High School in Parkland, Florida yesterday. Our deepest sympathy is extended to the entire community who are all victims of this tragic event. May we keep these individuals and our thoughts and our prayers in the coming days and months. A tragedy of this nature is never forgotten, and the individuals who perished will remain forever in our hearts.
We'll move on to visitors' comments. If there are no visitors' comments, we'll move on to student representatives.
The North Branford High School senior Brandon Simpson has been invited to participate in the Connecticut Allstate Music Festival in Hartford at the CT Convention Center. Brandon is an accomplished vocalist and has been a key member of the North Branford High School Drama Club during the past several years. The North Branford High School Jazz Band Ensemble has performed during home basketball games this season for both boys' and girls' programs. The group included various instruments, including percussion, horns, bass guitar, and rhythm guitar. Students performed the National Anthem and a wide variety of upbeat contemporary pieces during timeouts and during the halftime break.
The NBHS winter sports season continues to be a successful endeavor with athletic programs posting impressive records thus far, including girls' basketball with a record of twelve and seven, boys' basketball eleven and six, boys' hockey ten, four, and one, and girls' co-op hockey fourteen and three. Indoor track school records have been broken this year as well, including a new four-by-two school record of one fifty-three thirteen, set by Erica Ruth, Grace Little, Mackenzie Glenn, and Jenna Bryden; a new four-by-four-hundred school record of four minutes twenty-four seconds and four twenty-four forty-eight, set by Erica Ruth, Nadia Becker, Mackenzie Glenn, and Jenna Bryden; and a new long jump school record of sixteen feet two inches, set by Mackenzie Glenn. Due to the success of the North Branford High School Student Council's semi-formal this past fall, the organization is sponsoring a spring dance at NBHS during March. This dance is in addition to the scheduled junior and senior proms held off-campus each spring.
Following the close of exam season and marking period two, administration and guidance counselors have scheduled at-risk meetings for any student who is struggling academically. Meetings typically include parents, if possible, and any support staff who works with identified students. The meetings include a review of the following: current earned credit status and credits needed for graduation, current grades and attendance, identification of the difficulties, and then a discussion of strategies moving ahead to improve academically. That's all done.
Thank you. Any questions for student reps? Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Was cookie for the ride?
No.
Are you sure?
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
We'll move on to approval of previous minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-second, eighteen? Discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Is there a second?
Yes.
Yeah. Second. Vice Chair Papa Holzer.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Janet Balsamo.
Yes.
Carolyn Kean Delora.
Yep.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen special budget workshop as submitted?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to personnel.
Thank you. You can just like to.
His superintendent has received a retirement resignation from Ms. Lynn Lanzoni and family and consumer science teacher at North Branford High School, effective the end of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year after twenty years of dedicated service to the students of North Branford. Can I have a motion to approve the retirement resignation of Ms. Lynn Lanzoni?
I'll so move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? I'm sorry. Did you want to say something, Beth? Everyone's going to have to be a little bit tolerant of me. I've kind of gotten thrown into this, so I'm stepping up.
You're doing a good job. Doing what you're doing.
But if anyone wants to raise their hand and be like, "No, you did something wrong," I'm all happy for it. It's fine. Okay. Moving on. No appointments, no leaves, so superintendents report.
Thank you. I'm honored tonight to have a presentation. Mr. Keith O'Rourke is going to walk us through the dedicated work and efforts of many that have come together to honor Mr. Alan Davis with the Davis Way. You have a blurb in your document in front of you that describes the philosophy behind the Davis Way, what it stands for. So with that being said, without any further ado, we also have students here, in fact, members, and we have a brief presentation from the SMARTboard. So if you'd like to move to the side so you can see that. And when we do cue it up, if you would like to turn the lights off. Those are the clear. Can I just please go over to stand and move over to the center?
Okay. We don't need the lights off yet. Before we.
This is based on give you the cue.
Before we turn the lights off.
It'll be.
I'd like to thank both the board and Mr. Schoolmaker for having the opportunity to give the presentation that you're about to see about our new initiative at NBIS, the Davis Way. I'm joined up here right now by Mrs. Megan Rusick, who's our interim assistant principal, Mrs. Danielle Johnson, who's the head of our pride program, and two of our students, Grace Morrow and Robert Mullins, who are going to speak about the Davis Way after we watch the video. But I'd also like to thank all of the NBIS staff and students who are here right now to support this program as we launch it to the community. What you're about to see is something that our students were able to view on Monday morning. And to give you a quick idea of what you're about to watch, when Mr. Davis retired in August, we immediately started brainstorming ideas to pay tribute and honor him for his forty-three-year career and dedicated service to North Branford. And after floating many ideas around, the idea that came to us was the Davis Way. So without speaking any more of it, you're going to watch the video, and then after the video, we'll further explain what the Davis Way is and what it will be. The Davis Way.
Cue.
To recognize the career and honor the legacy of Alan Davis, North Branford Intermediate School is proud to present the Davis Way. During a career which spanned forty-three years, Alan Davis influenced countless people. As a teacher, advisor, department chair, and administrator, Mr. Davis passionately and humbly served the students, staff, and parents of the North Branford Public Schools. A true hawk to the core, Mr. Davis was both a student and a teacher at NBIS and served as our principal for fifteen years until the time of his retirement in 2017. Mr. Davis's impact is immeasurable, and the NBIS community will forever be indebted to his service. In following the example Mr. Davis set for everyone, NBIS is committed to living the Davis Way. Physically, the Davis Way is the pathway that students, staff, and guests alike walk to enter North Branford Intermediate School. Street signs that read "Davis Way" are positioned in beautiful planters next to the NBIS main entry doors to mark the path. Upon entering NBIS, you are greeted by a stunning plaque in our main lobby with Mr. Davis's image and an engraving which includes the Davis Way as a philosophy. The Davis Way philosophy is based upon both Mr. Davis's personal lifelong connection to NBIS and the character traits he exhibited that made him an amazing person. A philosophy that embodies integrity, humility, and the symbolic meaning of the hawk itself, wisdom, focusing on the task at hand, and using the power of observation. The Davis Way embraces these attributes as well as the belief that school is a place for learning, growing, laughing, belonging, and generosity of heart. This philosophy will now become a part of our pride program, which is the North Branford Intermediate School PBIS Initiative. All students and staff at NBIS are committed to following Mr. Davis's example and living the Davis Way.
If we can put the lights back on.
So as the video explains, the Davis Ways to Face is both a physical tribute to Mr. Davis. In addition to being a physical tribute, it's a living tribute to Mr. Davis in the way that we've incorporated this philosophy that we're referring to as the Davis Way, based on his attributes as an educator and as a human being, into our pride program. Our pride program is our PBIS component at NBIS, and it's part of our character education program for our students. So the Davis Way as a philosophy is now part of NBIS Pride. And to talk more about pride and how we've incorporated the Davis Way into pride is Mrs. Johnson.
So the students saw the video, and they also did some activities. Our pride program stands for productivity, respect, integrity, dependability, and empathy. And those are all the attributes that Mr. Davis displayed on a consistent basis to his students and his staff. So being able to incorporate the Davis Way into our character education program just fits so nicely because he was all of those things. I think for, you know, for me as a staff member and personally, you know, this was one of, his passing was one of the most difficult things in my entire career. I'm sorry if I get emotional. But to be very honest with you, it is such an honor to walk in that building every day and see his picture and know that we are honoring him in the way that he really deserves to be honored. Because his leaving left such a hole in our community for our students and our staff in to be able to know that we are doing right by him in all of the things that he stood for and the things that he did in our building, we are carrying forward, and we're just not going to let those things go by the wayside. He put so much time and effort into getting to know the students and working with the staff and being such a personal human being that it's an honor for us to continue to, you know, let his legacy live on in a way that he would want to. Now we have some students who will talk about what the Davis Way means. Sit down.
Mrs. Schoolmaker, board members. My name is Robert Mullins, and I am a student at North Branford Intermediate School. Being in eighth grade, I was in schools where Mr. Davis was last year as principal. And I think what I'm trying to say to you tonight could be best summed up by something that was said in the PSA that you just saw, was during a career that has spanned more forty-three years, Sir Davis has touched many lives, influenced countless people. One of those lives was mine. I had a very close rapport with Mr. Davis. I remember walking into the cafeteria every day, seeing him talking to the students, going around the cafeteria sweeping, or out with this tennis ball, cleaning up our scuff marks. And Mr. Davis is truly the physical embodiment of all of the components of our pride initiative. And it is for that reason and for the ones that were presented by grace that we believe that the Davis Way initiative, in addition with pride, will be a great idea that will benefit NBIS students for many years to come.
Hi, my name is Grace Morrow. The Davis Way is something that is now very important in our school system. The Davis Way shows the true potential of NBIS, doing things such as opening the door for others, picking up trash in the halls, and even just cleaning up after ourselves. Mr. Davis not only taught us to follow pride, but he modeled what it is like to really care for something. He showed so much passion for what he did, and he loved it. So now we have to continue doing our part and continue to follow the Davis Way.
And I really don't think I could have said it better than our students. So our hope is that the Davis Way will live on much longer than any of the teaching staff in our building's careers do. This will be something that is referred to and it becomes common verbiage in NBIS, that when we want something done well, if we want to be kind to others, if we want to do things right, we do it the Davis Way. And that's our living tribute to Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. And our students, before you go too far away, guys. Does the board have any questions at all for the students? I know that, you know, we have to have, you know, gone through some very, very difficult months over the last six months, and the staff has been amazing with their resiliency and their ability to come together and honor Mr. Davis with the video that they presented to him while he was battling his illness. And it really showed the true community, the loving spirit. And having, I've only been in education a short time, twenty-five years, and I've never worked with a person that has touched so many lives as Alan Davis. I've never heard a person speak an unkind word about Mr. Davis. He was an amazing, amazing man, father, husband, teacher, administrator. And this is something, as the students spoke of, that will live on, that will become a part of our tradition at NBIS and one that we can be so proud of. So thank you. Thank you to the entire staff, to the parents that have been here that are part of this. It's been an honor. Behind our two students is the replica of the plaque that hangs with such great pride at NBIS, and that will live on forever. And I know Mr. Davis is there in spirit with us tonight. So thank you again. Any questions, sir?
No, I just want to say I have him for a teacher. He was my geometry teacher in soft career, and he was my favorite teacher ever. He was just incredible, and he made learning fun. And it just, you know, I hope he's always remembered.
I've heard that many times. He was my favorite teacher. And many of them were high school students that had him as a high school math teacher. And usually, you don't hear students saying their high school.
No, but in the sense of humor, that was still.
Usually, math teachers are not the favorite teacher.
Yes.
Mr. Davis's name always rose to the surface. Great. Thank you, guys, so much. You did a wonderful, wonderful job. Very proud. Okay. We do have the Board of Ed briefs. I'm not going to obviously go through the briefs page by page. Administrators are here if you have any specific questions. They have been quite busy. I do want to spotlight, I sent an email to you this afternoon, just thinking about a program as part of the professional development yesterday at NBIS. The Guidance and Support Service staff did about a thirty-five, forty-minute presentation on red flags, identifying students who are at risk, students who are in need. They walked through different scenarios and signs of children that may be experiencing difficulties in their lives, and they worked with the staff to go through different processes to get those students the help, to get their names down to our support staff so we can assist them in any way. And unfortunately, it was the same day that we had that horrific tragedy in Florida. Prior to that, the security officer at the middle school had worked with the staff as well, and with his thirty-plus years as a police officer, as a high-ranking police officer in New Haven, he had an opportunity to share some bits of information should we ever have a situation. I'm obviously not going to go into any parts of that, but I want you to know that I was in contact with the North Branford Police late last night, and we've taken some measures and have done some things to increase our presence on the campuses. And I think it was well-received, and we'll continue to do that until further notice. And if you have any questions, obviously, we don't go into too many details because it did confidential with security. Any questions regarding Board of Ed briefs? Okay. There is a letter under exhibit D, the National Council of Teachers of English. Chelsea Dodd was recognized, as we mentioned at the last board meeting, we didn't have as much detail. But if you do take a look at that exhibit, you'll see the highest awards, the towns that are recognized, Greenwich, many private schools, Greenwich Academy, Brunswick School in Greenwich, Newtown, and then North Branford for recommendation for the highest award. If you look through the next two pages, they're all her mostly dirt A school systems. You'll see U. Canan, you'll see Millford, Greenwich is mentioned, Westford. So it really is a tribute for this document, this work, to be recognized at such a high level. And I certainly want to reach out to the high school staff and the administration in that direction of Mr. Ford for his efforts, and obviously Chelsea Dodd. She's gone out, tried a couple of times over the summer, to professional opportunities, writing workshops, and has brought that work back to our students. So we're really very fortunate to have her, and we commend her for efforts. Any questions on the spotlight? Okay. Speaking of spotlight, we're fortunate tonight to have a presentation from Jerome Harrison. There's a number of students and staff here, and Ms. Parker is going to talk about her efforts in bringing STEM activities to Jerome Harrison through robotics and what our students have been doing, working with our middle school students. So Ms. Parker, please take it away.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Parker, and I'm the intermediate school at Jerome Harrison Elementary School. In an effort to enhance STEM activities at Jerome, we implemented a robotics class for all second graders at Jerome Harrison, and we have a few of our second graders here with us tonight. Research has shown the STEM activities have shown to enhance student engagement, student inquiry, student leadership, problem-solving, and teamwork skills, skills that we promote with our students each and every day. In addition, this class helps us to connect Jerome Harrison with NBIS, thus helping to enhance our homeschool community. And what's really neat is to watch kids teach kids and kids learn from each other. And our children have learned wonderful vocabulary about science, robots, how items work together to make things move. And NBIS students have learned not only about robotics, but about teaching and patience, working with young children, and motivating students. And I know Mrs. Bannen, who's here tonight too, one of our specialty teachers, I'm sure she would agree with me to say that they're just naturals. They are unbelievable with our students. And I cannot thank Ms. O'Rourke and Megan Resnick, I'm sorry, I butchered your last names, enough for their support and collaboration with us in order to make this happen. So without further ado, I would like to show a brief slideshow of pictures of our students working together, and then I would love for you to hear from the students and to see some of the robots that we created.
See, I didn't have to say anything else, students. You're in the lucky seat over there.
Yes.
Fantastic.
And one thing I would just like to say before you hear from some of our students is that this one has been possible through our grant funds from the North Branford Education Foundation. So we're very grateful to them. And also, Mr. Matt Broder is here with us tonight. He's a robotics teacher at NBIS, and he's been wonderful, with not only his students but our students as well. And I'd leave some of our NBIS and MBIS students that would like to say something to Nate Gildersleeve. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Nathan Gildersleeve. I currently attend North Branford High School. I was one of the very first robotic members when the club started. Over the last five years, I've been helping out the robotics club. I have to say, the best time of my life is spending with all of these children and students right here. Over the past month, we have been working at JHS. They're extremely interested in robotics and are moving at an impressive rate. The students are learning all the basic mechanics of robotics, such as learning the parts, basic programming, and operating the robot. Each group is assigned one robot kit. Each kit contains all the robot parts, including sensors and a controller. The groups are about two to four kids each and are assigned one to two mentors. The mentor's job is to make sure that the kids understand their robots and vocabulary, also to show them how to build it, and teach them how to drive it. We taught them how to drive with a basic controller and had them do a competition. The competition was to have them drive the robots through cones set up in like a race format pattern. If they hit a cone, they would reset. Those who made it through the cones without hitting and made it to a harder set of cones in which if they hit the cone, they would get one reset, but if they hit it twice, it would end their turn. Each kid got a small prize for participating. The entire process so far has been great, and it has been a good learning experience for kids and for us, too. For the mentors, robotics has been a huge part of our lives and is important to each and every one of us. Robotics is the future of our education and will benefit North Branford school systems. None of this would be possible if it wasn't for the dedication of each and every one of students and the commitment of Matthew Broder and Elizabeth Parker. For all of us, robotics isn't just a place to make friends, it is to make long-lasting memories. We have become a family. On behalf of the NBIS Robotic Club, I would like to say thank you for giving us this opportunity. On behalf of the MBIS Robotics Club, I would like to say thank you for giving us this opportunity over the years.
So now I would like, do you want to bring some of your writings over to the board members? And then students, do you want to go and show the robots around, you want to walk around and show the board members? Are you ready? You want to go ahead and tell them you're going to the floor?
So Ms. Parker, while the students are passing out there. That's right, so there's a perfect entrance. The timing is perfect, don't you worry. The grant was written to the Ed Foundation, I think Ms. Parker received just over $1,000.
Uh, $2,000.
$2,000 for the kits, so the...
This is cute.
The monies came from our Ed Foundation and these kits will live on for many years. It's a plug for the Ed Foundation.
So I'm sorry, one circle for the gathering, take it. We're going from class to class and cycling through.
So this is the first group?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
That's a lot of work.
Get along to the middle one.
Back up so we can see that.
So if you press both forward, it goes forward. If you press both backwards, it goes backwards. And if you do, if you press one forward and one backward, it's back. And if you press one button and another button, it goes up and down.
There we go.
It goes up and down. So it'll go up and down and open the post.
So if you really want to...
You can put it on, it's like, you can put it on autopilot.
Do you want to move back for this one?
Yeah.
Oh wait. What is it? He's doing it auto thing?
Oh, okay. It's...
Let somebody else have a try too.
That's red. I guess that's what red means. The green makes it go, the red block makes it stop.
Oh, okay. Does it clean floors?
Tell them what was your favorite part about robotics? What was your favorite part about our club?
Driving.
Driving?
Yeah. How did you do in the race? Did you like the race?
Yeah.
How long did it take you to build your robot? No.
So how many cones did we knock down before we got better?
Two months.
Two weeks.
How many of those cups did you knock down before you got really good at it?
Yeah.
Give that kid a license.
Wow, impressive.
Very impressive.
So would you guys want to do this again if you could?
Yes.
Okay.
So we started and then every second grade class will have an opportunity.
Nice.
We had a few days where we lost some, we won more.
So how long was it? Like a month?
It was going to be about four weeks, but like I said, we lost some days, so we've extended. But as they moved on, it should be about four weeks. Most we kept them together, but these are going to be taken apart. Then our next class will start from those.
This is our normal model.
It wasn't my classroom. And I mean, the pieces, I'm not kidding, are missing.
Yeah.
They were very stumped. Let's see if we can spare them.
Very nice. Thank you guys. Thank you for sharing that work with us.
Oh, wow. I don't think I could have seen that in class.
Thank you. Really? Their original copies? Oh, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, why not?
Yeah, because, well, Dana saw them, you guys didn't see them, so pass them that way and give them to Mary.
Cute.
It was $2,000. From the Ed Foundation. A reward of that to one Mary's notice.
Cute, right?
Yeah.
Love the smile.
Next item on the agenda is a grant award. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to, Ms. Wooten, did you share information about the grant?
I did not. Sure, we're excited very hard.
For the entire time. So you see listed that Ms. Wooten authored a title grant for student support and academic outreach credit was for $10,000, which we received. So I'm going to just ask her to speak to some of the opportunities that we get.
So the TETACORE grant is a credit grant. We are, based on the size of district and demographics, we're allowed at most to receive $10,000. We were awarded that maximum allowable amount. It is to help enrich students in instruction. So it's actually for teachers to get trained in various things. So we are allowed to use the funds for training teachers to teach an additional AP class. We can have teachers go to enrichment to teach something like robotics or project lead the way. So some of the things that we're already currently funding can be funded by this. And it also can help for, if we pay a teacher, to come back after school to teach an extra robot club or a world language club or something like that. So it's really about helping students get a well-rounded education, including bringing technology into the fold and allowing our teachers to gain the skills they need to do that.
So similar to what you just experienced with our little guys with STEM, it brings it to the entire district with the need of a $10,000 grant for purchasing programs and doing Google research and potentially adding another AP class. So congratulations and that certainly will come in handy. Legal Services is next on the list. It was there from the last board meeting. There's nothing to discuss on there, so we left it on there. If you want us to remove it or if you want us to table it, that's your decision.
I think we should probably table it until there's a full board here.
We can leave it until, okay? So you want it back on the mark?
Yes, please.
And now the budget request for the board. We've had many conversations and two workshops to build a budget that we feel is fiscally responsible in the best interest of our students, moving the district forward, based on the goals of our strategic plan and our mission. So that being said, it's now your charge to deliver a number that we will proceed with and work with moving forward in the process.
There's a motion to reduce object 111 certified salaries by $19,552 to eliminate requests for additional athletic coaches. Can I have a motion, please? Can I get a second? Discussion?
I'm against reducing the... I'm not persuaded yet by the superintendent's reasoning for eliminating freshman sports. I haven't been around to the schools to verify. I happen to think that coaches have an impact on kids' lives and eliminating the human contact is very important to me and I think it's very important to students. I also think that because from what I learned that we've eliminated freshman sports, that there are kids that won't go out in their sophomore year to play sport because they haven't had the tools during the freshman year to get better at sport. And I understand the argument about student enrollment is down and some of the other arguments, but I also know that there are kids in your freshman year who may not even play sport, but when they come out, they start to get better and then they get better and then by the time they become a junior, senior, they're leaders. And also, I think coaches having a human contact with the children is more important than not having somebody at that young age of 14 or 15 to look up to and be involved in an activity. And I think there's more... I weigh sports very heavily, because I know being part of a team could let kids be leaders and not followers. So I'm against eliminating this here. That's my personal opinion.
Any further discussion or should we take a vote? All right, Mary, how do I do this?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Papa Holser?
No.
Secretary Sienna?
No.
Janice Bolsono?
I'm sorry, I would reduce, you want to reduce?
No.
No.
She's voting no on the motion.
I'm voting no on...
If you vote yes, you'd be reducing.
Right. I'm sorry, so if I vote no, I will be reducing?
No, if you vote yes, you'd be reducing.
No means no, we don't want to reduce by $19,000. Yes means yes, we do. I can say yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
No. So the motion's defeated.
Okay. Now, obviously, the monies, if they are approved, will stay. If we don't have a freshman sports team, the money sits and then it's the discussion of the board what to do if the money happens. So you are aware. And this past year, we did not have freshman teams and it was an enrollment base, not just the decline in student enrollment, but in participation. And the athletic director, under the guidance of Mr. Stephler, presented, and I'll ask him to resurrect that document because I'd like to share with you what the board acted on last year to, you know, take away the sports. I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, Mr. Mace. I'm obviously a former athlete and father of athletes, so I understand. But it was for many other reasons and I'd like to gather some of that data just so that I could get you off the speed dial. Some things happening in the shoreline and what we're seeing in Connecticut.
You know, and let me say this to you, last year, Chris Meener was the coach of the seventh and eighth graders at North Branford Intermediate. And he asked me to come down and help out during spare time. And he had so many girls on that team that it was hard getting them playing time and I figured that those girls are going to roll over when they come to North Branford High School, there's going to be a good, strong freshman class and build for the leaders so that North Branford female basketball team would be state champions again. But now that I hear that the freshman team was eliminated, I don't know what happened to those girls. And a lot of them put in a lot of time in the seventh and eighth grade, so when they get to the ninth grade, they're not going to have a team, you're going to mix them with the sophomores and the senior students are going to get more playing time than the younger students. I just think that's wrong, at least now that I think that's wrong. And that's my personal opinion.
Sure.
That has been my experience last year, working with Chris Meeners and the seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball team at MBIS.
Are we ready to move on to the operating budget? To approve? Okay. I need a motion to approve an operating budget request of $32,386,538.
So moved.
Did you end that thing? That's what that added.
I need a second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Roll call vote. Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Moving on to the capital budget, to approve a capital budget request of $389,280 for school year 2018-2019.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Roll call?
Vice Chair Papa Holser? Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Moving on to the capital budget, to approve a capital budget request of $389,280 for school year 2018-2019.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Roll call? Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Okay, kindergarten enrollment, who does that?
Thank you. That's, I'll keep going. We're in the process of signing our little ones up for their full-day kindergarten experience and I'm excited to say that we had approximately 80 students with 20 additional applications pending. Is there an update? Have there been any more than a triple date?
It's 80 and a half now.
So we're at, obviously, approximately 100 students. In the past, moving up through the summer months over, there's Dr. Wells standing over there. Most recently, you've done those enrollment numbers. In the summer months, we usually gain another...
It's varied. We're through 15, 20.
Another 20. So projecting out if we're 120 or more in that kindergarten enrollment, that projection is pretty accurate to what we've seen. So we'll keep you posted as we move along. We did have a snow date that we had to move that registration so that could have been affected, but that was a good turnout for our first day. Okay? And the Ed Foundation, there's been so much conversation this evening regarding the Davis Way. It's kind of appropriate. The Shining Star Dinner is going to be renamed the Alan Davis Shining Star Award Dinner and we have community members that will be honored. John Calamita, who works for the Town Public Works, has been in town for a number of years. Kathy Grandfield, our own Kathy Grandfield, MBIS science teacher, who has done such great work in the community and in the private sector for helping wounded veterans through her captainship of her boat and taking veterans out on fishing experiences. Lou Pattenoster, former board member, who works here at Park and Rec, who has been a volunteer coach for the past 25, 30 years and referee for many of the sports. And Cliff Potter, another longtime favorite in the community, very active in the Potato Festival, the Agricultural Society Committee here in town, his lovely wife Dolly worked in the district for many years. So it should be a wonderful evening. These are four dedicated people who have given so much to the North Branford community. We'll have tickets available, we'll get those dates out to and if you are interested in coming or getting additional tickets, where you can pick those up. And it's really fitting that it would be named after Alan Davis. That was a real favorite of his, being involved with the Ed Foundation and helping to write grants and scholarships and assist those in the district like you saw tonight with the robotics club. So that is it for my report.
We'll move on to committee reports. Negotiation?
Yes, we have, as we discussed earlier, the two units, the cafeteria and the secretaries have ratified the contracts as we had discussed them in earlier executive sessions. So I would ask for motions to approve them and that means the only, well, there's actually one more outstanding contract with the custodians. They were unable to meet as a group prior to this meeting, so they'll, I'll be bringing that to you in March. And I'm now starting negotiations with the paraprofessionals. Never a dull moment.
So now we'll make some motions?
Please.
I need a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 1303228 of Council Number Four, AFSCME secretaries effective July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Sure. Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
I need a second motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 1303382 of Council Number Four, AFSCME cafeteria workers effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Vote? Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
I need a second motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 1303382 of Council Number Four, AFSCME cafeteria workers effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Vote? Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Okay, kindergarten enrollment, who does that?
Thank you. That's, I'll keep going. We're in the process of signing our little ones up for their full-day kindergarten experience and I'm excited to say that we had approximately 80 students with 20 additional applications pending. Is there an update? Have there been any more than a triple date?
It's 80 and a half now.
So we're at, obviously, approximately 100 students. In the past, moving up through the summer months over, there's Dr. Wells standing over there. Most recently, you've done those enrollment numbers. In the summer months, we usually gain another...
It's varied. We're through 15, 20.
Another 20. So projecting out if we're 120 or more in that kindergarten enrollment, that projection is pretty accurate to what we've seen. So we'll keep you posted as we move along. We did have a snow date that we had to move that registration so that could have been affected, but that was a good turnout for our first day. Okay? And the Ed Foundation, there's been so much conversation this evening regarding the Davis Way. It's kind of appropriate. The Shining Star Dinner is going to be renamed the Alan Davis Shining Star Award Dinner and we have community members that will be honored. John Calamita, who works for the Town Public Works, has been in town for a number of years. Kathy Grandfield, our own Kathy Grandfield, MBIS science teacher, who has done such great work in the community and in the private sector for helping wounded veterans through her captainship of her boat and taking veterans out on fishing experiences. Lou Pattenoster, former board member, who works here at Park and Rec, who has been a volunteer coach for the past 25, 30 years and referee for many of the sports. And Cliff Potter, another longtime favorite in the community, very active in the Potato Festival, the Agricultural Society Committee here in town, his lovely wife Dolly worked in the district for many years. So it should be a wonderful evening. These are four dedicated people who have given so much to the North Branford community. We'll have tickets available, we'll get those dates out to and if you are interested in coming or getting additional tickets, where you can pick those up. And it's really fitting that it would be named after Alan Davis. That was a real favorite of his, being involved with the Ed Foundation and helping to write grants and scholarships and assist those in the district like you saw tonight with the robotics club. So that is it for my report.
We'll move on to committee reports. Negotiation?
Yes, we have, as we discussed earlier, the two units, the cafeteria and the secretaries have ratified the contracts as we had discussed them in earlier executive sessions. So I would ask for motions to approve them and that means the only, well, there's actually one more outstanding contract with the custodians. They were unable to meet as a group prior to this meeting, so they'll, I'll be bringing that to you in March. And I'm now starting negotiations with the paraprofessionals. work in the community and in the private sector for helping wounded veterans through her captainship of her boat and taking veterans out on fishing experiences. Lou Pattenoster, former board member, who works here at Park and Rec, who has been a volunteer coach for the past 25, 30 years, and referee for many of the sports. And Cliff Potter, another longtime favorite in the community, very active in the Potato Festival, the Agricultural Society Committee here in town, is lovely, like Dolly, worked in the district for many years. So it should be a wonderful evening. These are four dedicated people who have given so much to the North Branford community. We'll have tickets available. We'll get those dates out to you, and if you are interested in coming or getting additional tickets, where you can pick those up. And it's really fitting that it will be named after Allen Davis. That was a real favorite of his, being involved with the Ed Foundation and helping to write grants and scholarships and assist those in the district, like you saw tonight with the Robotics Club. So that is it for my report.
We'll move on to committee reports. Negotiation?
Yes, we have, as we discussed earlier, the two units, the cafeteria and the secretaries have ratified the contracts as we had discussed them in earlier executive sessions. So I would ask for motions to approve them, and that means the only... Well, there's actually one more outstanding contract with the custodians. They were unable to meet as a group prior to this meeting, so they'll... I'll be bringing that to you in March. And I'm now starting negotiations with the paraprofessionals. Never a dull moment.
So now we'll make some motions?
Please.
I need a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 1303228 of Council Number Four, AFSCME Secretaries, effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Sure.
Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janah Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
I need a second motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 1303382 of Council Number Four, AFSCME Cafeteria Workers, effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Vote? Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janah Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
I need a second motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 1303382 of Council Number Four, AFSCME Cafeteria Workers, effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Vote? Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janah Bolsono?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to budgets and operations.
Well, we met prior to this, and we discussed a number of items, including the status of the current budget, which is fine. We discussed potential early retirement incentive plan for, excuse me, teachers. We have to move a couple of bank accounts to Key Bank. We talked a bit about the boilers at the high school, which fortunately are now in place and nearly ready to go. I think probably within a week, they will be ready to be tied in. And we talked a bit also about the process of a renovation project for the high school.
Curriculum, instruction, strategy planning, strategic planning?
We met tonight before this meeting. I'll do my best if not step in. We went over the Smarter Balance test results from last year. The current seventh grade outperformed Camden, East Haven, Wallingford, Madison, and is above the state average. The current eighth grade overpowered Camden, East Haven, Wallingford, Branford, and the state average as well. The ELA, the current seventh grade and eighth grade, outperformed Camden, East Haven, Wallingford, and the state average. And the Science CMP, eighth grade outperformed North Haven, Camden, East Haven, Branford, and the state average. And we were given statistics that the grades have been going up, and we have a predicted estimation as to it will be going up more this year.
So we'll put the presentation on our review page. It was a summary of those scores, and more comprehensive presentation of the scores is on the other page, on the middle left page from September. We also went over some of the initiatives and improvement efforts that have been engaged in by North Branford Intermediate School staff and administration to help with some of those increases, improvements in student achievement.
So all student or all school improvement plans will be based upon those standardized tests, or if it's Smarter Balance for the middle level, the SAT for the high school. Each administrator will write building goals, which will be based on the teachers' SLOs for their student learning objectives, and then that all culminates with my goals to you as where we're moving the district and looking to improve all student outcomes. Any questions on curriculum? Thank you.
That's obviously one of my weaker areas, obviously, with my children's ed department, so I know it's hard to...
Public meeting, everyone to come to the vice president's meeting.
And we'll have that presentation for you, so you can take a look at the...
That'd be great, just because that's something I'm not...
Yeah, you have to look at it.
I have our copies for the rest of the board. I can leave you after you...
I highlighted.
Thank you. Pensions?
Actually, the pension committee didn't meet this month, but I was unable to attend, and as a matter of fact, it was just yesterday, I guess. I was unable to attend, but I did ask the town treasurer to let me know if there was anything extraordinary that happened at the meeting. I haven't heard anything back, so... I mean, they did approve a number of pension requests, but that's sort of the typical business of a committee.
Policy, Beth?
Policy committee, we have three policies for a first read. If you... In your packet, you have Exhibit E, which, given by the attorney, recommended for consistency of the board's policy as a result of Bill's passed during the 2017 legislative session. Those go with policy P1020 and policy P1120, student attendance and student discipline. And Exhibit H, Memorandum, again, from the attorney, suggested revisions as recommended as a result of the 2017 legislative session, and that is for policy P1245, health assessments. They're all in your packet for reading.
So Beth, these are first reads, right?
First reads.
So that means we do nothing with them tonight? We take them home, we read them?
You read them, and then this discussion next meeting, and then we vote to approve.
Okay.
And we did schedule meetings for March 6 and March 27, I believe, for the policy committee.
Aces, I don't know who's on Aces.
That's Sarah.
I took a vote for Sarah.
Oh, did you?
Yes. So I attended their board meeting on February 8. You'll have to forgive me, it's like something in the deep end of the pool. There's so much, so I can tell you I came at that meeting. I'm not sure I can tell you how it overlays with everything. But the focus of this particular meeting was they went over their bold steps action plan. What I took that to be is, it was kind of like an internal review. They were looking at how they do things, how they can improve, how they can move forward. So they divided it into bold steps, 1 through 6. One was they looked at their data collection, how they analyze information, how they use information. Two, they looked at developing and testing new lines of revenue. Three, they developed referral billing and contract processes that are consistent with agency-wide. Four was to develop comprehensive system for employee development, recognition, and what they call voice, which is employees' voice, basically. Within that bold step four, they did mention for the employee development that there's going to be a workshop for cognitive coaching by Jennifer Abrams. They said that North Branford was doing cognitive coaching, they're interested, and they said that they sent out information to our town. So I'm sure that you know about that.
Training, absolutely.
Right. Okay. So those were the bold steps. No, I'm sorry. Five was transparent internal communications, and six was to create a process to capture the issues that require advocacy within the region. And so that was their bold steps. They talked about where they were and where they're going to go forward, what they were concluding. And then they briefly mentioned their leader hill move, which I don't know much about. I know they're moving there. They're in the process right now of looking to hire from someone who will sell properties. They're evaluating right now which properties would be best to resell, which properties they should keep, and then they will hire that person next month, and then they'll move forward with that. And then the other thing we discussed was the transportation sharing between districts. It was a way that you could share the cost of transporting students to specialized schools. We wouldn't really limit that right now. I think it's a very limited amount of schools right now.
There are six schools, and we currently don't have any students at any of those schools.
So hopefully, the future will be that they'll be able to expand the program, and then more towns can share the cost of transportation to these places.
They're looking to diversify in as many possible ways as they can, including the Chinese Institute, bringing students over, getting rid of some of their Skip Street properties, new revenue streams, because obviously the state cuts. They're heavily relying on neighboring resps, and they're just looking to diversify. So, thank you, Jan.
Good job.
How was lunch?
I didn't even have it, but it looked good.